We'll call the meeting to order. Good afternoon, welcome to the monthly meeting of the City of Des Moines zoning board of adjustment. This board has the power under Iowa law and zoning ordinance of the City of Des Moines to hear requests for variances and exceptions from the regulations in the zoning ordinance, conditional use permits and appeals from the decision of the staff in the administration of the zoning ordinance, and to make decisions in such matters. This is an open and informal meeting, it's currently being recorded right now. The board members have received a copy of the agenda, staff report and recommendations. Copies of the agenda, staff report and recommendations are available in the public in the trays on my left over here. We should have six member board here, and I'll introduce the members that are here. By my far right will be Brooke Rosenberg, next to him will be Cindy Smith, next to her is Tom Clark Senior. On my left it will be Mel Penns, next to him Linda Westergaard. My name's Bill Gray. Representing City Legal today is Michael Kelly on my left, and representing City Staff we have Eric Lundie, City Planner, Bert Drost, City Planner, Emmanuel Toribio, City Planner, and Sue Ann Donovan, the Zoning Enforcement Officer. The board is required to base its decisions in each case upon the criteria established by law for the type of relief sought by the applicant. Law applicable to each case is identified in the written staff report. If the facts as determined by the board demonstrate that the criteria established by law for granting the relief have been satisfied, then the board must grant the relief. Otherwise, the board must deny the relief. All speakers are requested to focus their comments upon those facts that demonstrate whether or not the criteria established by law have been satisfied. Each appeal will be announced in order and the staff will present a brief explanation of the appeal. Any written comments received by the staff prior to the hearing will be distributed to the board or otherwise identified. All speakers are requested to speak from the podium over here on my right, and to start their presentation by giving both their name and address. The applicant or representative of the applicant is allowed to speak first, and will be allowed 10 minutes to present their appeal. Anyone else present in support of the appeal will then be allowed five minutes each to present his or her comments. Anyone present in opposition to the appeal will then be allowed five minutes each to present his or her comments. The applicant then will be allowed three minutes for rebuttal or other closing comments. The meeting will then be closed to public comment, and the board will make a decision. That decision and reason will be announced. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report unless an individual present or a member of the board requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda and separately considered under the public hearing agenda. The decisions of this board can only be appealed to the Polk County District Court. If you believe you have been harmed by an error made by this board, your only remedy is to seek relief through the district court within 30 days of the filing of the board's decision and order. If you believe the zoning regulations applied by this board are wrong, you may petition the city council to change those regulations. All material written or otherwise used today as part of any presentation will become a permanent part of the record and will not be returned. If you have cell phones on now, we ask you to turn them off or at least put them on vibrate because they are disruptive to the process here. We will be probably taking a break around the 3:00, 3:30 timeframe depending on where we are in the hearing. As I mentioned, we've got a consent agenda that right now contains 12 items, or 13, 13 items. Bert, we have a few changes though.
We have three items that have to come off of the consent agenda, those being number eight, the request from a farmer's market on Adams. We just had two cards come back in opposition to that, so we wanted to just briefly present that to the board. Item number 11, the appeal at 701-51st Street. Staff has recommended denial of that, so that has to come off the consent agenda. And then item number 12, the proposed signage at 2105 Ingersoll Avenue. We've got several cards against that, and I will just go over that one briefly.
Okay. That leaves the following items on the consent agenda, and I'll read those off. Item one is an exception in variance at 2911 Ingersoll. Item two is an exception at 4411 Franklin Avenue. Item three is an exception at 2329 44th Street. Item four is an exception at 2206 Morton. Item five is an exception at 4007 Ovid. Item six is a variance at 6000 Aurora. Item seven is an exception at 3132 Kingman Boulevard. Item nine is an exception at 5800 Flewer Drive. Item 10 is a variance at 815 East 13th Street. And item 13 is an exception at 1419 8th Street. As I mentioned, these items have already gone through with staff. They appear minor in nature, and we're going to vote on them as one item unless somebody here is here to speak against any of those items. If anybody's here to speak against those items, would you let me know? Okay? I'll entertain a motion to accept consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would motion that we approve items one through seven, items nine, 10, and 13, and the exceptions, variances and special permits requested therein, subject to the staff recommendations as presented.
Okay, I'll hear a second.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Motion carries five to nothing. So if you're here to speak about any of those items that I just read off, they've been approved. You're welcome to sit around and watch your city at work, but you can go get your permits and get started. Thank you. Brings us up to item eight, special permit at 3301 Adams Avenue. Quite a clear out there.
All right, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Bert Drost, Planner for the City of Des Moines. Item number eight, it's fairly minor, I'll just go over it briefly, is a request for a special permit for a farmer's market that would be held within the Beaverdale Park. They would have it one night per week between the hours of 5:00 and 8:00 p.m., and then they've also requested an additional one hour before the 5:00, 8:00, and then one hour after the event for teardown. So it would technically be from 4:00 to 9:00 o'clock. Here's an aerial of the park. Here's Adams Avenue. There's 17 90 degrees stalls along Adams Avenue that would be used for customers, and there'd be the parking lot within the park that would be used for the farmer's market as well as these two grassy areas within the park. This is just showing where on-street parking is available in the area. Since it's anticipated, those 17 stalls, there wouldn't be enough, they would expect that there would be people having to park on the adjoining residential streets. Here's a photo of the park. Right here up in the foreground are the 17 stalls along Adams Avenue, and then the parking lot in the middle of the park. Another picture of the open space. And we got 16 cards back in support, and then two in opposition. The two in opposition were mostly concerned about traffic, and I'll let the applicant explain how they're going to handle the traffic issues that this might generate. But we've recommended approval, subject to four conditions and a minor change when I get to number two. Number one, the farmer's market shall operate in accordance with an agreement with the city's park and recreation department who manages Beaverdale Park. I'll just point out that that agreement hasn't yet been made, but it will have to be made before they could use the park. Number two, the farmer's market shall only operate one evening per week between the hours of 4:00 and 9:00. Originally it said 8:00, but they've requested that extra hour to tear down the stands. Then it's limited to the months of May through October. Three, the special permit is valid for a five-year period to end March 28th of 2017. And then four, the special permit is subject to reconsideration if the use becomes a nuisance. So, any questions?
Questions? Yeah, how does this cleanup work? Is the Parks Department responsible for it, or is the people that run this responsible?
The Beaverdale Farm, Farmer's Market Incorporated is a separate entity that would do that, and there's two representatives here that will be able to answer that better than me.
Mel?
First, the staff recommendations here are a special permit for a five-year period. Does the special permit cost more if it's one year, two years, 35?
Well, the upfront cost is the same, but obviously there'd be a $300 fee every year if it was only for one year. So, five-year is the maximum that the code allows the board to grant it for.
So the only real special permit fee would be coming to us here, or if they have to come to us, we have sure.
Right, right.
Any other questions? Thanks Bert. Applicant, representative of the applicant?
Good afternoon, I'm Carla Turner. My address is 2514 38th Street in Des Moines, and I'm representing the Beaverdale Farmer's Market. We did get the two signage, or the two cards back. One was mostly concerned about street parking and traffic, the other was the usage of the park. We did some research on the parking situation. We have the parking spaces available in the beginning area of the park that can be used for vendors and customers. We also estimate 17 to 25 parking spaces on the street that are legal, and we have spoken to a police officer who is willing to police that traffic and make sure that traffic flow does not block people's driveways and, you know, and their yards and that kind of thing. We have 38th Street, 36th and 35th available. Urbendale Avenue and Adams Avenue have parking also available east of 38th on both sides of the road that could be used. It's been our, from living in Beaverdale area, we see a lot of pedestrian traffic walking to events, so we don't foresee a problem with traffic or congestion in the neighborhood. As far as the usage for the park goes, you know, we will have volunteers there to monitor what's going on, make sure there's no activities that are not relevant to the market and, you know, nuisance to the neighborhood. So, is there any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Cindy?
Have you determined which day? Because I noticed on the staff recommendation that it just says A-Day, one day.
We picked Tuesday evening, so that we don't conflict with other markets in Des Moines, and also any other activities that may be going on in our neighborhoods.
And you want to bring this up, what, June 1st?
We'd like to start June 5th through October.
Mel?
Two questions. Do you have any other experience in managing or participating in farmer's markets, and is there a size of what you're proposing here that would compare with other farmer's markets around the metro that you've seen?
We think we would probably be comparable to the Drake Farmer's Market. We've done some research with the other farmer's market groups. One of the people that sat on our board has also, is a vendor and has participated in the Des Moines market, so.
I'm going to help her out a little bit, because each of us sort of has different things we've kind of been dealing with. When I started this market, I worked.
Just like Dan, I know.
Dana Greenwood, 2905 37th Street. Right there in the ground zero by the farmer's market. I've got a good grasp on the traffic, traffic patterns, the street widths, and how many people park where and at night. I began working with an individual some of you know, Christine Partey, and she's got some expertise in farmer's markets, and she was one of the first people I partnered with. She's kind of guided me through a lot of the resources that I've used, a lot of the way we set up our bylaws, which we wrote, what's worked, what hasn't worked, looking forward to getting grants to help us accomplish the things we want to accomplish, our community and educational purposes, which is really why we're in business. People think it's, one of the cards mentioned, commercial, having the market in the park for commercial businesses, well, that's kind of it. Someone else had mentioned, some of the people who might be against it really don't have the big picture. There's a lot of things we want to do beyond just the farmer's market, we're using that as a vehicle to start doing our community and educational purposes. I've worked with Jordan Clausen down at Gateway Market. He was the second guy on my team who knows markets in and out. A gentleman named Sean Sullivan, who's a Beaverdale resident, who's been down at the Des Moines market for a long time, sat on our board for quite a while. I still call and text him, he's been one of my advisors. So I really think we've done our due diligence in getting the right people to work with to know what works and what doesn't work.
Yes.
And that's kind of the direction we're going. Before I got everybody together, I've tried to pattern it more towards the larger markets and what their end result is. When you start out, obviously there's a lot of limitations. Money's one of them. The money's coming out of my, there's a lot of limitations, but we would like the end result to be, once we get a budget, to be able to, people think about the Beaverdale market like they do the Valley Junction market, and like they do the Des Moines market and some of the bigger markets. First, say the Johnston market and some of those markets. Been working on it for about a year, and am constantly in touch with a lot of people who are intimately involved with markets, so I hope that helps you on your question.
Definitely, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I've got a couple of questions.
Just like, before you do something, didn't you have two questions, Mel?
No, I just asked for their experience and what size.
Okay, good.
I'm just curious, you presented this to the Beaverdale Neighborhood Association Board, I understand, at one of their past meetings. Were they in support of this?
Yes, we have an email that we had just passed around. Mike Tejens.
Mike Tejens, okay.
We talked to, and he said we're full on board and we support it.
Okay, do you have any plans for entertainment, like musical entertainment or anything that could create distractions for the neighbors?
We have plans for very simple entertainment, not, you know, a lot of loud rock bands and that type of thing, more acoustical, local talent. Some of the high schools, we had planned to bring in some of their groups and let them perform in the neighborhood and kind of try to bring the community together that way.
Yeah, church groups. I've been in touch with Monroe and Perkins, many of the churches in the area. Our focus is really on what we can do for the local area. We're Beaverdale folks, you're a Beaverdale folk. But of course, we're going to branch out, and we're going to, right now Ron Lombard is still a go for day one, should this happen. Nothing beyond that. We absolutely are not looking at doing anything beyond a one or two-person type of deal with an amplifier, and these gentlemen were helping us out with answering those questions and what permits we would need.
We didn't really want it to be a party atmosphere, more of a family-oriented.
Yeah, no alcoholic liquor license, we're not interested in that, we're totally focused on family. I think another thing of note, too, is some of you know our whole story. We were originally trying to locate on Beaver Avenue, or Urbendale Avenue east of Beaver, and we worked really hard with Dart, and everybody was great, but it just didn't work. Things may change, I don't know if that's relevant to this permit or not, but things may change. Our ultimate goal, our dream is that the farmer's market is a seamless market, not like most markets surrounded by a defined border, a parking lot, a certain area. We want it to blend into Beaverdale, so it looks like everybody's participating. Trying to organize as a 501(c)(3). Again, I've made contacts with a lot of nonprofit, Iowa food and families, a lot of nonprofits, and our ultimate goal is, once we get going, how do we serve those people, particularly local, particularly Beaverdale groups.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here to speak in support? Anybody here to speak in opposition? Any last questions for staff?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
My question is, is other farmer's markets, one of the cars, they were concerned about the damage to the grass of the parks. And are, do we have any other farmer's markets where we're allowing them in a city park where there's going to be traffic on the grass, or are they usually in business areas?
Well, the few I can think of are on parking lots. There's one at the Four Mile Community Center, which, the majority of that is on the parking lot, but the vendors kind of back up onto the grass.
And there's a sidewalk there.
Yeah.
I mean, I've been to that one, and I don't see that it hurts the grass.
Yeah.
And we'd plan to go.
Well, we'll call you if we need you though.
All right. Tiva with the Parks Department was going to be here, I don't see her now, but, oh, there she is, sorry. Did you want to address her?
Sure.
I'm Tiva Dawson, Recreation Manager for the Parks Department. One thing is, almost any use of our parks does have potential of causing damage. If you were to go to Beaverdale right now, soccer has caused turf damage, so for us, as part of people coming in, having different activities in our parks, there's potential for that. We have made the stipulation that no vehicles could be on the turf, that if they wanted to have tables and vendors on the turf, they were welcome to do that. We don't foresee that that'll cause a lot of damage. But again, you know, it could rain the night before, or the, early in the day, and that has a potential, but that also probably wouldn't be good for the vendors to have focus on the mud if there's there. So we'll try and monitor that, but again, for us, you know, any park use has a potential for that, and, you know, so, well, but, yeah, just so you know, the vehicles is what has the potential of causing the greatest damage, and that would not be allowed.
Mel?
Bert, just clarification here possibly. I think the applicant mentioned something to the effect, well, we'll see if the permit works for this location, to kind of paraphrase him. This special use permit would only be for this location. If they would want to move the farmer's market, they'd have to reapply and come back, and we can't transfer the permit. So, I just want to make sure I was clear and that they're clear. Okay?
And that would be a good thing, I mean, if it took off that well, another 300 bucks isn't going to kill.
Right. Right, or if they just say, gee, we're not getting enough people, let's just move, we have the permit, well, the permit is only for the property and on the docket here, right? Okay, all right.
Any other questions for staff? Thanks Bert, we'll close the public portion, go to board decision.
Is this your part of town, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah? Okay, I'll make the motion. Kind of ingrainly involved here. I'm moved that we accept staff recommendation.
I second.
Been moved and seconded, any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to nothing.
Cindy's part of town, too?
Yeah, you'll have to take us on.
Yeah.
Thanks guys. You stick around, watch your city at work if you want to, but you've had enough, huh? Item 11, it's an exception at 703-51st Street.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Eric Lundie, Senior City Planner. The property we're dealing with here is at the corner of 51st Street and Harwood Drive on the northeast corner. The home actually is oriented with its front entrance facing 51st Street. The setback in question for the exception is towards Harwood. Because it's a corner lot, they have to observe two front yard setbacks, and so that's the issue that's at hand right now. If you're looking at it on the street towards the northeast, behind the intersection here, this is the home they're proposing the addition into the setback in Harwood off of this end of the dwelling. This is looking at it from the east, so you would see the addition coming out here from the home in this area. And this would be the front door of the neighbor, next door. This is looking more directly straight to the east from the west.
Okay.
And again, this is the area where the addition for the garage would be. This shows you kind of a bird, this shows you the bird's eye view of the addition as it would project out from the existing footprint of the dwelling. And again, that, this is the front of the home to the east. This is a sketch of the elevation looking to the west side. This is the west side, as you look east, you're looking at the west side of the home facing 51st Street. As it exists now, the garage is here with a hip roof. They would be going with another kind of a hip with a projection forward with the garage addition, so you'd have a little bit of a break in the ridge line here with this roof plane. This is the consent map. I'll pass the comments around to you then. Should have known that first. As you can see, there's a little mostly opposition, although one indicated in favor and one did not respond. Staff's primary concern here is the, is the view shed that you would have along Harwood. This really projects into the view shed for these homes that are in this area that fit, front Harwood, and the difference being, this property doesn't front Harwood, it fronts 51st Street. So, this is more of a side, normally would be looked at as a side yard, but because it's a corner lot, then it gets into that front view shed, and that's where the conflict occurs. Based on that, we were concerned that the views that'll be impeded by that are going to affect the essential character and that criteria for granting of the exception, and therefore we're recommending denial of the exception. However, if the board does find that it meets the test for the exception, we do want to ensure that any garage is constructed in conformance with the design, because we believe the design as a standalone, it does a good job of integrating into the existing home, and then also that they would comply with building codes and have issuance of a permit, so.
Okay. Questions for staff? Yeah, Eric, one of the cards mentions that there are some covenants that may affect the properties surrounding this area. Did anybody provide you with copies of those covenants?
No, we don't have any, and we would not enforce those.
Well, I understand that you don't enforce.
Yeah, but I wasn't made aware of any other than that statement, so.
All right, thank you.
One question, one of the cards also mentions something about the current owner. Are they, is the owner the resident, or is it a rental property?
At this time, I don't believe it has a certificate, although I could look into that and see if it's a rental. That doesn't really bear into our review of it, so it wasn't something, what I do know is it's a listed partnership, so, on the, with the secretariat.
But in a sense, it's not an owner-occupant who would live there and be, have to live with the neighbors. It's somebody that comes in, builds something and leaves.
It's possible, that would be the case. Yeah, it's good, yeah, this could be investors that would be looking to sell the home. I guess I couldn't, I couldn't assume anything at this point, you could probably ask the applicant that question.
I think we will. Any other questions for staff? Thanks Eric. Applicant, or representative of the applicant?
Good afternoon, my name's Scott Johnson, I'm a member of Southern Partners LLC, the property, the owner of the property. My address is 712 Ashworth Road in West Des Moines. Prior to today, we were not aware that any of the neighbors were objecting to the request for the variance. I'm certainly glad to answer any questions you may have, but at this point in time, I'd request a continuance to next month's agenda so that we have time to meet with the neighbors and see if we can alleviate their concerns, and then come back to the board at that time.
Was that something we could consider?
Otherwise, if we have questions, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Just kind of briefly, double car garage already, why, why a third stall?
To answer some of the questions, yes, the property was purchased as an investment property to be rehabbed, resold currently. We're in the middle of completely remodeling the property. We've invested to date, well, close to $100,000 in the property. We have a party, a couple, who is very interested in purchasing the house, and one of their requirements would be that they would like to have a third stall garage on it, so that's the purpose why we made the request.
Okay.
Otherwise, I wouldn't make the request, because you typically don't get your investment in a third stall garage.
Okay. Any other questions? Before we vote on whether to give you a continuance, you're looking to do this in the April meeting? One month lead time, good enough for you?
That would be fine.
Okay. We're going to hear, if there's anybody here to speak in opposition, we're going to hear from them, too, so.
Okay.
If you, we've got your request, so, now we'll hear, anybody here to speak in opposition? I think you just raised your hand, sir? The reason we do this is because in the event that you can't make it at the next month, at least they voiced their concerns, maybe you'll even address them in the process, but...
Mr. Chairman, board members, my name is Paul Tyler, 699 Walnut, Suite 1600, Des Moines. Mr. Chairman, board members, my name is Paul Tyler, 699 Walnut, Suite 1600, Des Moines, Iowa. And I'm here representing Don and Dorothy Hagan, who are not the green one, but the red one, right across the street from them on Harwood. The Haggens would be here themselves, but they're out of state and contacted me late yesterday. And frankly, I'd just as soon not see a continuance, because I've done a lot of running around today trying to figure out what's going on here. I think, as an initial question, without maybe some facts that either you or I have, you know, this might be something that an exception could be granted on if you felt it prudent. And obviously, my client doesn't, and I think staff has indicated why they don't, and my client's views would be very much the same. The house on this lot is a big house on a fairly small lot. I was questioning some of the distances, and I've looked on the assessor's site and the measurements on the assessor's site, and did not... I went out and looked at the house, but I didn't go out with a tape measure to try to measure things. But I would not be surprised if this would be a legal, non-conforming house on that lot already. In other words, it doesn't look to me, not as an engineer, but as a lawyer, that the house probably meets all the side yard requirements, front yard requirements anyhow. Now, it may, but it doesn't look to me like it does. It's a big house. Quickly, trying to refresh my memory on when exceptions can be granted, I note that one of the areas dealing with front yard exceptions or any yard exceptions indicates that an exception from a yard requirement to permit an addition to an existing legal non-conforming building can only be done if such addition extends no further into the required yard than the existing building. And this would certainly do that. I mean, it would take up 15 feet of the existing situation already. So without belaboring the point, my client is opposed. I do not speak for the other neighbors, but I understand through my client that there's considerable opposition. We don't think it'd be appropriate for an exception, and we question... Could be corrected, but we question whether or not the board would even have authority to grant the exception.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak in opposition? We have before us a request for a continuance.
No rebuttal.
If we hear the case, you'll have a rebuttal, yes.
Let's have, sir.
If we hear the case, then you can have a rebuttal. But if we're going to continue it, then your rebuttal's next month. Okay? Thoughts?
I have a question for Mike.
Does staff... And perhaps for staff.
Yeah, there's two different exception provisions. And he's right, that could be granted under the provision that he indicated, and that's in a situation where, let's say, the existing home was already non-conforming and would require a variance typically. If it's no closer than the existing encroachment, then it falls into an exception with a lesser burden to show. And so that provision is in there for that. And I'll give you the sections here for the record on that. In 64-4A, there's the provision also that such exception does not exceed 50% of the particular limitation or number in question, which in this case is the 50-foot setback requirement. If you go... You could go down to 25 with an exception, and it would still fall on the exception level. If it was more than 25 feet into that setback, and it didn't encroach any further than the existing building, it could also be considered an exception under a different provision that Mr. Tyler spoke of. So there's actually two separate provisions. So it's not that it can only be granted under that provision in the code, but there's actually two provisions that could apply.
I guess my question is, really revolves around whether or not staff or legal needs additional time to make a determination as to whether this building is already a non-conforming use.
I don't think that the staff reported recommendation explains that. Explains the alternative, or I think it could next month. Does that answer your question?
Well, if the property doesn't conform already, I'm not inclined to grant them more stuff, you know? And if... It seems to me that the board can't really decide the case without knowing whether or not we've got a non-conforming use at the present time.
Right. I agree with you.
Yeah. Okay. For that reason, I would not be continuing.
Right.
Yeah.
You would vote that we do continue?
Yes.
Right. And that is a motion, Tom?
Yeah.
Go ahead, your second.
Do we continue?
Yeah. Okay. Any further discussion? Mel, you seem perplexed. You're good?
No, no, just thinking.
It's been moved and seconded to continue to the April meeting. You're good? Okay? All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Motion carries six to nothing. Your comments have been taken. If you can't make it next month, we've got them in the record, though. I thought you might. Thank you. Item 12, exception in variance at 2105 Ingersoll.
Item number 12 would be a request for three signs on a Noodles &amp; Company restaurant that is under development at that site. The site is just west of Martin Luther King Jr. Parkway on the north side of Ingersoll, part of the former Stu Hansen's site. Here's the site plan. This was actually before the board last month to get relief of the front yard setback. Since it's owned C2, they needed the variance to be up to the front property line. The Noodles &amp; Company restaurant would be in the East Bay. They're requesting three signs, one on the south side, one on the east side, and then one on the north side. And in order to do these three signs, they need two appeals. And one is for an exception of one sign over the allowed two that they earn, and then the others for a variance of 101 square feet over the maximum allowed, 84 square feet of wall mounted signage. Here are the elevations of what the signs would look like. This is the sign, Furning, Ingersoll, on the south side. This is the sign on the east facade that would be, I guess, just on the east side of the building. And then this photo or design here is the sign on the north side, which is the rear of the building. And the reason for that sign would be to capture the sight of vehicles going south on Martin Luther King Jr. Parkway. As you'll see from the cards, most of the concerns revolve around the sign here being lit. So staff's recommendation actually is that that sign not be lit. Recall from the aerial, there's the Midtown Heights Townhouse Association just to the north with about five units that face this development. So there'd be five or six townhomes that would face that sign. So their concerns are that the sign would be lit throughout the night to dodge a nuisance for you. This is just a photo of the site today. This one-story former car sales building would be removed, and you can see the five units back here that would face that sign on the north side. Staff recommends approval to allow the signage. We've just recommended that be subject to three conditions. The first one being that that sign there on the north side of the business shall not be illuminated or lighted. And two, any sign should be installed by a sign contractor in accordance with the sign permit, and the signs shall be in conformance with the submitted plan, so. When I talked to the sign contractor earlier this week, he didn't think that not lighting that sign would be a problem, but I'll let them address that today.
Okay. You have the consent map?
Yeah.
So everything is illuminated? Well, what's... What do we got down here?
Smith Metzger, down here at the Furning Grand Avenue. They submitted a card against him as well.
All right. Okay.
I have a question. Doesn't Noodles Zoo only...
It's not...
Not Noodles Zoo. Noodles and Company, whatever they call it. Don't they only occupy a portion of that building?
Yeah, they occupy... They would occupy the east 42 feet, and their sign earnings is based upon their frontage, so.
What my concern is, and I think that probably the neighbors to the north's concern, is what's the rear of this building going to look like? Are we going to have lots of signs back there? Is there any kind of a... Has the owner proposed any kind of a uniform signage policy for the north side of the building?
I would let them address that, but the zoning ordinance would allow them to put up to 50% of their sign... Earned signage in the rear. So for instance, the Noodles Restaurant, they earn 84 square feet of signage. That's based upon having 42 feet of frontage along Ingersoll Avenue. So since they earn 84 square feet, by right, they would be allowed to put 50% of that, which is 42 square feet, on the rear. So each of the other tenants in this building, I believe there'd be four tenants total, each of them would be able to put half of their earned signage on the rear. Does that make sense?
Yes, it makes sense. I was just wondering, it's a new project, we've got new housing in the area. It sure would be nice if the owner had some kind of signage policy, so that as the people of, you know, people could understand what they're facing in the future if...
Right. I would ask them to answer that when they get up here.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Brooke?
When you say the sign, and you don't want it to be lit, does that mean any type of lighting?
Yeah, any type. We had talked about just prohibiting internally illuminated, which would, you know, could allow the light to, you know, come off of the sign, or indirectly, like if you have light shining onto the sign. We still felt that that might be a distraction, so we recommended no lighting whatsoever.
Any other questions? Thanks, Bert. Applicant or representative the applicant?
My name is Don Chestnut, Chestnut Signs, 971 Northeast Broadway. Originally, they did want the sign to be lit. I, after seeing the recommendation of the staff, I called them. They have no problem with not lighting that sign, so it would be a non-lighted sign.
So they're comfortable with staff recommendations?
Yes. And the reason they want one back there is most of the parking is going to be back behind, so people will know that's the entrance.
Questions?
I have a question. Are the... Is the front and the side sign lit?
Yes. The other two signs.
The other two signs, one along the side and the one across the front.
Any other questions? Thank you. Anybody else here to speak in support? Anybody here to speak in opposition? Any last questions for staff?
Yes, I just have one question. I'm not sure if they know the answer to this or not, but do you know what the hours of operation are?
I do not.
And we don't...
It's owned C2, so it would be allowed to be 24 hours a day.
And we don't have the owner here to address Tom's question about kind of an overall plan for the building.
Bert, refresh my knowledge here. I think it's reasonable that people who park in the back, and if there's an entrance at the rear of the building, should know which entrance they're going into. But even without a sign as proposed, they would be allowed to put letters or signage on their doors and windows on the back, and that would not require any permits or square footage allotment, correct?
Correct. If it's inside of a window, the sign or it doesn't apply.
Right. So everybody could have a little sign that says, you know, "Back entrance, Noodles &amp; Company" on their doors themselves, if they're glass doors, and that'd be fine. What you're basically saying here is they've got enough signage allotment for square footage, and it just, we wouldn't light the sign they're proposing.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Any other questions? Thanks, Bert. We'll close the public portion and go to board decision.
I would move to stand.
I'd second that.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Motion carries six to nothing. Or is it... Let's... All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Those opposed? Thank you, Tom. Motion carries five to one. Item 14, it's a variance at 1808 Southwest First.
Southwest. Mr. Chair, members of the board, item number 14 is a request for a variance of four feet over the maximum allowed, four-foot tall height. It is permitted for a chain link fence within a front yard area, and it would allow for retention of an eight-foot tall chain link fence that currently surrounds a garden that measures 40 feet by 112 feet. The subject property is located just west of Indianola Avenue. It's part of the St. Anthony's Catholic Church and School grounds. The church and school are to the south, there's a playground here, and this is their bus barn. And then they have the garden area here to the east of that bus barn. The sign, or the, I'm sorry, the eight-foot tall fence was originally constructed last summer. It extended eight, or 12 feet onto City Rideaway. So they've actually been going through the process to vacate the 12 feet of Rideaway adjoining the bus barn property. And the Plan and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of that, and the city council received and filed that recommendation. And so the city's real estate division is currently working with St. Anthony's on a lease for that 12-foot wide strip of Rideaway. So the fence is on that Rideaway, or on that former Rideaway as well. This just gives you a little closer view. You can see the gardens here. The gardens have been there for a few years, a couple of years anyway, and they've since last summer added the eight-foot tall chain link fence around that. Here's a photo of the fence as it is today. You can see it has significant support on the inside of the fence and some braces holding it up. I would just point out that if they get the approval, they will have to get a fence permit for this sign, and as part of that fence permit, they'll be required to make sure that the fence is structurally sound. So I can't really tell if it goes into the ground right now, but they will be required to meet the requirements for having an eight-foot tall fence. I have spoke with somebody from the neighborhood who's concerned just with the appearance of this fence and the fact that there are these braces and other supports that aren't really typical of fence. So that's something that the board could take into consideration that if by chance they're required to remove the fence in order to comply with the building code issues, the board could possibly put a condition on it that requires any fence to be a little more compatible with the character of the neighborhood than the way it is today. And this is another photo of the fence. And the consent map, one card over here was in support, and then right before the meeting, I had a card handed to me from 1517 Southwest Second in this area here that is against it. So staff has recommended approval of the fence, subject to two conditions. One, that the fence be in accordance with a building permit issued by the Permit Development Center, and two, that the fence should be removed at any time the land is not owned by or leased to the church by the city, or at any time the use of the garden plots cease. So... And again, what I was talking about requiring a more compatible fence, we didn't put that in a recommendation, but that's just something I would throw out there for the board to consider, that if this fence has to come down in order to have one built with, in accordance with the building code.
Okay. Questions?
I have a question. One of the cards indicated that in the past, the plants have grown, the grasses, I think the card said, has grown up, and it looks like we're right there where traffic...
the card said, has grown up, and it looks like we're right there where traffic might be, it might impede the view. Do you have another view of it? I mean, can we see where the traffic pattern is, and would?
Edison there.
Southwest First Street is kind of a cut-through between Indianola Road and Indianola Avenue.
And is the garden right down there on that little corner piece?
Right.
Right, oh, right there?
Yeah.
So, if I'm on Southwest First and I'm gonna turn onto Edison, that might block the view?
Or if I'm gonna pull out from Edison, turn left or downtown, I'd have a bigger issue.
That's kinda like a dead-end street. And you see, it ends right there on the Southwest Second Street side, anyway.
The city ordinances wouldn't allow you to build any solid structures, like a solid fence, within the vision clearance triangle. And this fence wouldn't fall under that category. But the ordinance doesn't really address plant material.
But if you've got plants that are growing up there, then it, it would.
But even if there wasn't a fence, they could have high plant material, which we wouldn't regulate.
Evergreen.
Because the plants would not be in the right-of-way? Is that why, or? Just because?
They're not structural.
Okay, all right.
Well, the, the plant that are growing may not be on their property. They haven't come to terms on the property yet, have they?
Twelve feet of their plants may not be, yeah.
Well, but we're trying to decide something before they come to terms on the right-of-way?
It's been through the Plan and Zoning Commission and received and filed by council.
Has it been approved?
Council's directed the real estate division to work on the lease. So, the lease itself hasn't been approved yet, but...
Well, how do we do this before they lease the property?
Good question.
Well, it's, we know that it's going to go through. And what you could do is condition the, condition the approval based upon final approval of the lease. I think that could be another way.
Well, but we had one like this before on Simon Tire, and the city wanted an exorbitant amount of money for an alley, and it didn't go through. I don't see how we can do this till the lease is final.
In this instance, the, the council and their action to direct real estate to work on the lease, they actually directed real estate to sign off on the application as the landowner. Because technically, right now, the city is still the title holder of the twelve-foot strip. And the council action actually included the motion to sign the board of adjustment application.
Brooke, the chairman pointed out that stipulation number two, or condition number two, probably covers this, if the lease does not become effective. All right, well, I just wanted to be sure.
Very good. Any other questions for staff?
Is there a reason why they have an eight-foot fence? Is that just to keep people out of the garden?
Their application said for security and for keeping people out.
And what are they growing?
I could, I could probably answer that. The deer can come over my six-foot fence without any issue.
Any other questions?
That is amazing.
Thanks, Bert. Applicant, representative of the applicant?
Good afternoon. My name's Mark Paris. I'm the business manager of St. Anthony's Catholic Church, fifteen Indianola. The staff representative basically laid out what's the case. There's a couple of questions that got brought up. One was the reason why there's an eight-foot fence. At the end of the day, it's like most parishes or churches, it was a fence that was donated or scrap, and a parishioner who was involved with the garden. They knew they had people that were, people and animals that were destroying the integrity of the garden, so they found some scrap fence and constructed it. So, that explains probably why it's not cosmetically aesthetic to, to some of the residents, but two questions I may answer.
You're okay with staff recommendations, and to get a fence permit and everything?
Yeah, we're all right with that. We've, I've not received any communication yet from the city regarding the terms, or leasing, all that. So, of course, we would want to understand what, what the financial terms are. But, but we know we would have to go through, if that's agreeable, then we'd go through the process.
Sorry, Mel, go ahead.
Mark, not to be too rhetorical, but did you know you needed a permit to build a fence?
Hate to put you on the spot.
Yeah.
Especially an eight-foot-tall one.
Sometimes our parish has a history of just volunteers all of a sudden starting to just taking matters in their own hands, and next thing we know, we have a fence.
Right. Well, at a minimum, I, I mean, you've been doing lots of good things down there lately, but I might caution you, make sure you...
Understood.
Check where property boundaries are, setbacks, when permits are needed.
Fair enough.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else here to speak in support? Anybody here to speak in opposition?
Jim Poves, two-two-four East Livingston. The, looking at the three criteria that you need to consider on this, one is that they own other property in the area. This one here is directly across the street from the bus garage. You can see that it was recorded in nineteen sixty-seven. I believe this is when they got their tax exemption, property tax exemption in eighty-three. This is what it looks like today. Pretty wide open there. This is a, the property, actually, the bus garage, that it appears that they've had it for twenty-nine years. This is the property, or the part of the ground they own right behind the bus garage. This picture I actually got off Google Maps, August of two thousand and seven, is what that looked like at the time, the garden. You asked about traffic flow. There's speed limits, signs in that neighborhood, twenty-five going both ways on that street right there, the cut-through street. This is the... You can kinda see the corner clearance here. You asked about a picture of when they were in bloom. I know it's not very good, I took it off my cell phone, in October. Notice how high it is compared to like the minivan parked over here, and my own minivan parked here. There's a, this is a barn that you can really, it's almost, if it was a little farther back, would be hidden. This is the same barn in a picture just last week, or yesterday. Notice there's no stop signs in any of the intersections. It's just a twenty-five mile an hour racetrack, three blocks long. This is a picture, actually, on the sidewalk from Southwest Third as it intersects from Indianola Road to the ballpark, Sett Taylor Stadium, principal park. This is a fence that surrounds a playground that keeps my children safe that go there. And then this is the fence that is surrounding the garden. I guess, I, I did talk to, I did talk to Bert on Friday, and the thing that really concerns me is that, I mean, if they could show, if they went and pulled a permit and they could show that this fence was structurally sound, and you guys approve staff recommendations, that's it, right there. I mean, that's a pretty unique fence to drive by every day, two or three times a day. I, I guess I was kinda shocked through this whole process, I was kinda shocked that it made it through traffic and transportation, being out that far. I was kinda shocked that Plan and Zoning recommended to give them the ground, or lease it, provide it for them, whatever. I'm not sure you guys can put any limitations on what's behind it, but you can certainly see by the one picture, eight-foot tomato plants out in the corner certainly isn't a great thing, especially with schoolchildren right there. So...
It blocked your view, is what you're saying, when you're coming from, well, I guess from either direction, to that intersection, correct?
Right, that corner. I mean, the, like I said, this was, one picture, this one here was taken actually after the first frost about, that, towards the end of October.
So, the growth blocked your view, or the growth and the fence, or a little bit?
Well, I mean, if you look at...
A little bit of movement.
That, that does not block the view.
Yeah.
But, I mean, that certainly does. And I, and I don't, I don't know if you can put, I don't know if you can do anything about that.
About what they could plant where? Is that what you're saying?
Right. I think you could strongly encourage they don't put tomato plants out in the shore.
You showed some other pictures of vacant land. Are you, are you suggesting that maybe the garden should go somewhere else?
Well, I think, I think one of the provisions, the plight of the owner, is due to unique circumstances, not of the owner's own making. I mean, they could've put that garden on any other ground that they owned there. Do they have to put it in front of the bus garage? You know, and, I mean, the bus garage, number one, the, it's, that ground, that land there is a bus garage. It could be a bus garage whether there's a garden there or not.
And I just want to make sure you understand the one point. The variance is four, an additional four feet of fencing.
Yep.
And that can be for security for the bus barn, or whatever.
Yep.
It's, the garden is incidental to what they're requesting, so...
Okay.
But you bring up some valid points.
From my point, and as a neighborhood leader, I, that fence just is too unique. I mean, that's probably the best word I can describe. In talking to Bert, it, I guess it kinda bothered me that if you pass staff recommendations, they pulled a permit and prove, showed that it was structurally sound, they could leave that. I mean, you know, and I think, per our conversation, is why, I mean, I would ask at least to have some limitations put on them for...
You're talking about those side rails that are going all the way up and down there? That, that really what you're looking for?
Well, actually, what I'm looking for, I don't have a problem with a tall fence. It's, they've already got plenty of it in the neighborhood. Why does it, why does this fence look like that, and they have a square block right across the street that looks like a regular, ordinary, ordinary eight-foot-tall chain-link fence? Right. I mean, there's a vast difference of look there.
Well, they're gonna be back up here again, so I think that might be part of the question and answer session. Anything else you'd like to add, or?
No, not really.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Mel.
Question for Jim. Jim, you gave your name, address, and you mentioned as a neighborhood leader.
No, I didn't say neighborhood leader.
Yes, you did.
Okay.
That's why I'm asking you a further question. Are you president of your neighborhood association?
Yes, I am.
What is your neighborhood association?
McKinley School, Columbus Park.
And does this property lie within your neighborhood boundaries? And are you here in an official capacity today?
Actually, the neighborhood really didn't take a stance on it.
Okay.
They, we all, they all agreed that, that the fence looks terrible.
Okay.
I think we kind of agree that, you know, if, if they need a fence, that's fine, they don't need that fence.
Right. And even if you're not here in an official capacity, you're here as a resident of that neighborhood area?
Yeah, I live in the neighborhood, and, and I guess, probably the one thing, with, without any traffic control, the way those beams are set up, I mean, if, if there was just a little bit of a contact with car, you know, not being able to see, I mean, some of those beams, these beams would be right at windshield level.
Right. Okay.
I mean, it really is a...
Right.
I mean, and I guess from the neighborhood standpoint, and personally, you know, I don't have a problem with the fence, it's just that fence.
Okay.
And, and I was really alarmed when Brooke said, or Bert said, that, you know, if, if it was structurally sound, and they pulled a permit, that it could stay as is.
Okay. And Jim, you've got some good pictures here from your observations. Is this like aluminum studs here we're looking at?
I would guess that it...
Or what it looks like?
To be honest with you, I've never, I drive by it all the time.
Okay.
I don't even wanna get out and look at it.
Okay.
I mean, I'm a member of the church.
These look like six-inch aluminum studs, but I'm not sure.
And it, it, it just, having it there just didn't sit well. I, I would compare it to maybe like a dog kennel, that they had no way of hooking it together, so they took like these structural steel studs and lag-bolted them all in. I'm not even sure, I'm not even sure if it's in concrete.
Okay.
You know, I, I'm, I think that one of the things is, there's a big difference of temporary to permanent, and I think that one, one thing, obviously, a fence like at the playground would be more of a permanent structure. I mean, I don't know how you, how you could, I mean, I'm sure there's a certain way for temporary, but, but...
Mr. Park has... Yeah. You showed us a picture, and that is a playground that's owned by St. Anthony's Catholic Church?
Right, right across the street.
So, if we were to say that any fence shall be reconstructed to aesthetically conform to the existing eight-foot fence around the school playground, that would kinda cover it for you?
That's your guys' choice.
Okay. Thank you. I just have one other question. Did you, have you made any contact with anybody at St. Anthony's?
As my thoughts of the fence?
Yes, yeah.
I've talked to Mark, I think, at least twice about it, as a person and as a neighborhood. I've talked to the pastor, Monsignor, about it.
So, you've made a...
Yeah, I mean...
So, this is not a surprise either way?
The principal, I mean, I could go on, several.
Got it. Thank you. Is there anybody, any other questions? Thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak in opposition? Mr. Parish, you got three minutes? Can you answer a few questions, or tell your side?
All right. Couple of points that were brought up. There was a concern about traffic, which I believe this has already been passed through a traffic committee, or commission, or whatever. The request for variance is really about the height of the fence, right? Which the, Jim has really said the height of the fence is okay with him, which is really what the request is about. So, really what this boils down to is aesthetics. And so, I mean, what's pleasing to one eye is probably not to the other, but if it doesn't cause any concerns for traffic or safety, and he agrees that the height of the fence is fine, then I guess doesn't that really kind of answer all of our questions?
Well, I think the sticking point appears to be those aluminum beams that go along there. Is there any dying factor that those things have to be there, or?
Oh, I have no idea. And I don't know if it was just part of the, the scrap that they found, and that's why they constructed it, and I don't know if it provides support.
Mm-hmm.
I can certainly look into that. I mean, I wasn't part of the construction, so I don't know how necessary that is.
Well, I would, I'm just, you know, as you pointed out, across the street, you got an eight-foot fence.
Right.
And it's freestanding.
Yeah.
It met all the codes that were put in... It met all the codes that were put in. I would guess we could probably do the same thing. It's just my, my thought that it can be done. You're still going to have to get the, the permit, and it's going to have to be inspected.
Understood.
And I think it might not be a bad idea that if, if the inspector's out there, that, that gets pointed out that you really don't need to be here.
Okay.
I mean, it's just a thought for me. I don't know about anybody else.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
And Mark, if you can maybe answer this. You said you didn't, you weren't involved in the construction, but to your knowledge, are there concrete footings for those posts?
I apologize, I really...
Okay. Because some of those look pretty askew, and I would think to comply with city requirements, you're probably going to have to have a concrete footing for eight-foot posts. So whether we approve the variance or not, I...
Let's go down there.
I doubt whether the fence as constructed would meet permit requirements. I bet you it's going to need a more stable foundation for it.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any last questions for staff? Just one, Bert, we could put the stipulation in, or?
Yeah, it's up to you if you want to put the condition that if the fence has to be removed, that any fence be...
I don't think removed.
I don't think it's if it has to be removed, I think it's, if we're going to grant a permit, it's that fence is going to be aesthetically conforming to what they've already built. I mean, it's a matter of, of the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Not having to look at this.
They could, too, that you could approve a variance for four feet over the allowed four feet, subject to the fence being in conformance with the fence surrounding the playground across the street.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thanks, Bert. We'll close the public portion and go to board decision.
I'm not in favor of the fence. I think it looks awful. And I just, I don't know why they wouldn't want to be a good neighbor and have it look nice in the neighborhood. I'm disappointed to hear him come back up and say, "Well, you know, this is just the way it is," and, you know, who cares? Well, we care because we live in the neighborhood, and I don't think that neighbors should have to look at that. So I'm not going to support that fence. And, you know, if they can work out something so you have a nice fence, but I still think eight-foot is even too high. But that fence needs to go.
I'd concur with Linda, and a little different angle. St. Anthony's is a good thing for this neighborhood. They are the anchor for this neighborhood. They've done a lot of great things there. They've made additions to the church in the last 10, 12 years. They have a school there. But I think along with that, they need to continue to be a leader for the revitalization of this neighborhood, and this fence sends the opposite message. It looks like a compound, a military thing, a prison, something. I'm not in favor of any variances that would allow it to remain at least with the height that it is now. I'd like them to kind of start over and relook at this thing. We may not have the authority to require that, but it appears the way it was constructed, if it's with, you know, bubble gum and twine and scrap, as he referenced, I doubt whether we've got secure post anchors on this thing. I think they ought to relook at this, come at it with a real permit, so I'm not going to support the variance.
I don't have a problem with the fence being there. I want it to be aesthetic, but, you know, money's tight, and so if they, I mean, if you got some parishioners that are doing it, that's good. It's got to meet the permit requirements. And so I don't, we don't have to sit here and guess or agonize whether or not they have concrete footings in there.
Right.
The permit, the inspection department's going to take care of that. I guess the thing that I would say is, I could sit, let them have that, as long as they pass the permits, as long as they pass the inspection, they may, my guess is it's probably going to have to be a few changes made, but the one thing that I'd like to do, going along Linda's vein there, is, is to get that, that one beam out. Let's, let's, let's dress it up a little bit. Let's be proud of what we got there. So I would, I'd be interested in granting staff recommendations with the stipulation of, of dressing, getting that, that beam out of there. My thoughts.
Well, I, I agree with you. I think that basically, though, that the standard in the neighborhood is what's around the playground. So if you're going to grant anything, why don't you just say, build it like a one around the playground?
Better, better word, choice of words, yeah.
You know, now, I understand that you, you may not like eight-foot fences, you know, but this is part of a...
I could live with it if it, if it looked nice, but not that eight-foot fence.
Right. Yeah, and I agree with, I think that's, yeah.
I mean, the Leaning Tower of Pisa is straighter than this.
I know.
Yeah. That's Italian, too. Bad joke.
Don't forget you have to drive home south side.
I was baptized there.
Any other thoughts? Well, I'll put a motion out, much as Tom said, accept staff recommendations with the stipulation, number three, that it looks the same as the fence on the playground across the street. Keeps it uniform, dresses up the neighborhood. Hopefully, we've addressed the neighbors' concerns, and, you know, the inspection department's going to take a look at it and give their thoughts, so I think that indemnifies you quite a bit, too. So that's my, I'm going to make that a motion.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Is there any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Those, I'm going to take that as sick.
Slow on the draw.
Motion carries, and Mr. Pope, I hope we got, got you taken care of in that. We'll see. Thank you. Item 15. It's an appeal of the zoning enforcement officer's determination at 918 Southeast 21st. And we have a fairly large packet along with that.
Chair member of the board, Sue Ann Donovan, zoning enforcement officer. I'm going to present for staff today. Do have a fairly large packet. Again, it's a request for a determination on legal nonconforming rights that this property may have. A notice of violation did go out on this for failure to comply with a site plan that was brought in as a result of a previous board action granting a conditional use permit for this parcel for a salvage yard. They did not comply with that, with the site plan requirements. Got a notice of violation, filed an, an appeal of numerous things, including but not limited to some of the site plan requirements, which is a Chapter 82 issue, and the board can't rule on site plan requirements in Chapter 82. So we did meet and narrowed it down to, I believe, the appeal of the violations in the Chapter 134, which boiled down to an appeal of the determination that they'd lost legal nonconforming rights for this property to be used as salvage yard with storage on an unimproved surface. And I will defer to Mr. Hockenberg to make sure that we have that issue resolved on what the appeal is before the board.
Two issues, there's the...
Mr. Hockenberg, just so I can get it on the record, I can hear you, but guys upstairs don't.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name's Lou Hockenberg. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. There are two issues before the board today. From our perspective, one is as Sue Ellen identified, or Sue Ann identified, whether we have nonconforming, legal nonconforming use rights, number one, and number two, whether the ordinance has been cited for the violation is even applicable to this situation.
As far as the ordinance that was cited, the ordinance that was cited was 134, 1087 for contractors' equipment storage yard, I believe. No, I'm sorry, I apologize. It was 134, 1377 F5, which is parking trail, parking on an unimproved surface, which they were doing, for paving of a commercial parking lot. It's unclear as to exactly what Mr. Hockenberg's client is doing. There are numerous trailers stored back there, which would require paving, either as a vehicle storage lot, or a contractor's equipment storage yard, or a commercial parking lot. The, the site was for the commercial parking lot. I, I believe that they're not in compliance with their site plan, which was also cited, so I believe that we have the correct site, but I'm sure we will hear more on that later. In order to, to speak now to the legal nonconforming rights that they're claiming for this property, I'm going to have to go through a brief history of the property and an enjoining parcel and how they interplay with each other. I'm going to do this to make the record, and I'll try and make it fast, and then when we get into some of the later exhibits, I think we will get into what's more germane, and those would be the exhibits 27, 29, 31, 33, 34, 35, and 36. But we'll start briefly with the history. I'll go through this as quickly as I can. Exhibit one is going to be the ordinance that pertains to legal nonconforming rights to the property, and these exhibits will be offered as part of the record. I'm not going to offer them for each time I speak to them. Exhibit two is a plat that sets out the parcels in, in question that we're talking about. This parcel and this parcel were at one point used in combination by Mr. Seidenfeld, and later on, you're going to see that he separated off and sold the, the northern parcel on contract, and then retained this and eventually took it on a deed from the city of Des Moines. He had previously been purchasing this on a real estate contract. I'm going to submit as exhibit three, the Polk County assessor's records for both parcels, and these set out that the zoning on these parcels is M2. In 1989, this is exhibit five, if you're following along in your packet, is a decision and order of this board, June 28th of 1989, and what it sets out is that Seidenfeld Sun Iron and Metal Inc. was expanding the use of their conditional use permit to include the southern parcel and some other parcel, a larger area that they were under contract with the city of Des Moines as part of a relocation. So at that point, they were operating those under conditional use permit tied together in one use. That would be exhibit five. Exhibit six is a real estate contract, which Mr. Seidenfeld entered in with Tibbetts to sell the northern portion of that property on a real estate contract. Exhibit seven is an amendment to that real estate contract that was entered into, where Tibbetts then sold their real estate contract, or transferred their interest in the real estate contract, to Crow Auto Service, Inc., and that was in 2009. So at that point, Crow had the northern property under a real estate contract. Then somewhere subsequently, there was some discussion with the city regarding Mr. Seidenfeld's real estate contract with the city of Des Moines, and they resolved those issues, and Mr. Seidenfeld took the southern parcel that we are here to discuss today by quitclaim deed. So now he has the southern portion and the northern portion owned separately. He has a real estate contract on the north, he owns the south. We're going to go through quickly some of the aerial photography that shows the use of these parcels. This is the first one, is exhibit number nine, and it's from 2000, and you'll see it shows that the north and the subject property are both being used for storage of vehicles. At that point in 2001, Mr. Seidenfeld did have a salvage dealer's license that covered the property. That would be exhibit 10. Exhibit 11 is the aerial from 2002. Again, it's going to show that both parcels are used for the storage of vehicles. In 2002 until June of 2003, Seidenfeld again held a salvage dealer's license. That would be exhibit number 12. In exhibit number 13, we have an aerial photo from 2003, again showing that both parcels are used for storage of vehicles. Mr. Seidenfeld in exhibit 14 again obtains a salvage dealer's license. Exhibit 15 is an aerial from 2004, again showing the use of the property, both properties being used for the storage of vehicles. In 2004, again, Seidenfeld in exhibit 16 receives a salvage dealer's license. In 2005, we have an aerial photo, which is exhibit 17, which again shows the use of the properties together for storage of vehicles. Exhibit 18, Seidenfeld again receives his salvage dealer's license. Exhibit 19 shows again, that's an aerial photography from 2006, the combined use of the properties for storage of vehicles. In exhibit 20, Seidenfeld again gets his salvage dealer's license. 2007, exhibit 21, again, both properties are used for storage. Exhibit 22 is a case activity log from our system, which is the tide mark system that we log the business license applications. In 2007, Mr. Seidenfeld applies for a salvage dealer's license, which was denied because he didn't have a required fence on the south side of the property. So this was his last attempt to comply with the salvage dealer's license requirements. At that point, in exhibit 23, Crow Auto Service is coming in, and in 2008, pursuant to his use of the northern property, gets his salvage dealer's license. Exhibit 24 is a site map that shows Seidenfeld, who came in, come in in 2008, and he constructs a second building on the northern property. I believe that was with some agreement with, with Crow, although I don't know exactly how that structure went on a property that he was selling on contract. Exhibit 25, Crow Auto Service again gets a salvage dealer's license for the northern property. You don't have exhibit 26 in your packet, somehow that was left out, but that again is a license, salvage dealer's license issued to Crow Auto Service for July 1st, 2008 to June 30th of 2009. I can pass that around if you'd like to look at it, but it's just another salvage dealer's license.
25 to 27.
In 2000, in exhibit 27, we now saw, show an aerial photo from 2009, shows a change in the use of the property. You'll see in 2009, the north property has some storage of vehicles on it. The property in question that is now owned by Seidenfeld has no vehicles on it at all. Exhibit 28 shows again Crow Auto Service is getting their salvage dealer's license for the north portion. Exhibit 29 is a 2010 aerial photo, which again shows the north portion of the property is being used, but the south portion is, is clearly, there's nothing stored on it. 30, again, Randy Crow, or Crowto, Crow Auto Service is getting their salvage dealer's license, as they're supposed to, for his property to the north. Exhibit 31 shows a slight change in use in Mr. Seidenfeld's property. We now see a couple of storage of what looks like trailers, and the north property again, which is property licensed, properly licensed and has its conditional use permit, is being used. July 2011, exhibit 32 is Crow Auto Service salvage dealer's license again for his portion of the property. At some point in the changing in use between Crow Auto Service and Seidenfeld, Seidenfeld called and asked about the use of his portion of the property that he had taken title to, the property in question to the south, and he, he or his representative came in for a pre-application site plan conference in order to determine what he had to do to use that property for a salvage dealer. I'm now going to submit the, the conference minutes that were given to him, where he was instructed to come to the zoning board of adjustment on that property and receive a conditional use. Exhibit number 34 is his zoning board application form, where he signs on 110, 2011, Richard Seidenfeld, that he is requesting to construct a building on his portion, or his now property, and he wants a conditional use permit for an M2 for salvage. That's exhibit 34, and you can see that they, he has signed that. Exhibit 35 is the zoning board of adjustment decision and order dated February 23rd of 2011, wherein this board granted the conditional permit for use in the M2 heavy industrial district for a salvage dealer, put some stipulations on it, the building... The building could, should be constructed in conformance with the building codes. I believe those issues may have been resolved. I haven't had a chance to check all the permits. There were a couple outstanding, but I think those were just final inspections that need to be done. Site plan development shall be constructed in accordance with the site plan. Any site plan shall include paved off-street parking, paved maneuvering access drives, identify dustless surface such as paved or recycled asphalt product for any storage of salvage materials, junk, or inoperable vehicles. And they were to get an easement through the adjoining property. The city did take that street that they had previously vacated and extended it down far enough to give this property an access without having to go through the easement. Any future dismantling of vehicle shall require an amendment to the conditional use permit. I'm going to submit that. There should be in your packet an exhibit 36, and I don't have it in front of me, that is the site plan that Mr. Seidenfeld presented to the city, which was approved for the, where the building was going to be located, and indicated where he was going to put paving and where he was going to put, where he was going to put his landscaping in order to comply with this board's order. And Chapter 82 and Chapter 134 of the ordinance showed the building and paving and the site plan requirements. There was an inspection done December 7th of 2011, where it was found that the site was not in compliance with the site plan ordinance. I'm going to show you pictures from that inspection. Again, we have trailers now stored on unimproved surfaces. We have some storage back along the back fence, roll-off containers.
And the pictures are all exhibit 37A through...
37E, correct. Also showing junk stored off of a completely improved surface, barrels. We, you can see the paving, but there's no site plan improvements. They didn't plant any of the required landscaping that was required to be planted, and they're now parking off of an improved surface. On December 7th, a notice did go out from our office citing the violations. I think one of the questions is, is whether there was correctly cited for the paving. The site was 134 1377 F5 paving. Any off-street parking, including commercial parking lot, for more than four vehicles shall be surfaced with asphaltic or Portland cement binder. Not knowing exactly what those trailers were, I'm sure the inspector assumed that that was going to be a commercial parking lot of some sort. He could have come in with a site plan amended and done whatever type of designation he wanted to, to improve those surfaces. I don't think that's a fatal defect in the notice. It is notifying that they need to pave. The remedial action is to cease the illegal business in this location, which would have been the, at that point, he didn't have a valid CO, he still doesn't have a valid certificate of occupancy. So, that would have been to cease the illegal use. They didn't strike the parking lot for the handicapped accessible, install the handicap signage, install the plant material, complete, which would have also been a requirement of your board of adjustment decision and order that wasn't completed. Remove the trailers off the lot, can't be used for parking anything, including junk, salvage vehicles, nor can the building without a certificate of occupancy be used for the use that it was under. Update the site plans, showing what use is going to be there, the salvage use, and he was, is to obtain a salvage permit, which are those business licenses that he hasn't had for a number of years down there. I think the crux of this case is, is that Mr. Seidenfeld ceased the use of that property for more than six months, as shown by the photos. He didn't have anything down there. He constructed a building for his use on the property of the north that he had on, under contract to another party, vacated completely that southern, and came in to the board for conditional use permit to go back in on the southern property in order to do this, with the stipulation that he had to comply with the site plan. He has not complied with the site plan. He doesn't have legal nonconforming rights. He ceased the use, and he admitted he didn't have legal nonconforming rights when he came in and signed the application, saying, "I need a new conditional use permit." And he agreed he would come into compliance. He agreed when he brought in the site plan that he was going to bring it into compliance. Now, he's arguing, "I don't have to because I have some legal nonconforming rights." Any one of those events, the transfer of ownership, the ceasing of the use, the coming into the, with the, to the board, asking for permission to do what he was, he was going to do, and bringing in a site plan, all of those, truly, absolutely, and any argument that he has legal nonconforming rights to park on unimproved surfaces on this lot. Questions?
So, if, if he had legal non, let's say he did have legal nonconforming, none of the paving, none of the other items that would have been required in the site plan would apply? Is that kind of what I'm hearing?
He went in there in 1989 on this site, and there would have been paving requirements of some sort in 1989. So, I mean, I, that's the ordinance. We haven't had any right to be on unimproved surfaces since the 50s, or maybe before. I'm now getting, finding ordinances back to the 40s, so...
So, in your view, even legal nonconforming, there's still...
Even had legal nonconforming, he wouldn't have been able to just park down there like he is.
Brooke?
Question. On this letter of December 7th, it says remedial action. I don't see anywhere where it says he needs to pave anything.
Well, the remedial action is to remove the trailers off of the lot. And, and that would be remedial action until such time as it was brought into compliance with an approved site plan.
So, update the site plan would be, the number seven would be update the site plan on salvage use, which would mean you have to pave back.
Yes.
Okay. And legal nonconforming, since it was a contract sale, I presume that the seller is joint tenant. How do you lose nonconforming if you've never signed over the property?
They didn't, it's a question of abandonment of use.
Well, but I mean, when I've sold stuff on contract, I never gave up my right to the property until the whole final payment was made. I'm a legal, I'm joint, as joint tenancy. Is there joint tenancy under this?
You didn't, you, no, there's no joint tenancy, in my opinion. You didn't use a separate parcel. They were separate.
So, it separates, you're separating the two.
Are you talking about the north parcel or the south parcel in our history?
Brooke, my understanding is that the north parcel is the part that was sold on contract.
Correct.
And that has nothing...
And we're talking about the south.
That's right.
Right. My fault.
Yes.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Sue Ann. African or representative, African?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Lou Hockenberg. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Firstly, with respect to these exhibits, some of which I just saw for the first time today. Exhibit two does depict the two properties, north and south. Exhibit four confirms that Seidenfeld and son, which is now Seidenfeld Incorporated, is still the legal title holder of the north part. And until most recently, still occupied a good part of that property as a tenant on site. Exhibit five, I think, was talked about, that was the proceedings from 1989.
Mr. Hockenberg, would you stop right there? Do you have a copy of the lease for...
No, I don't, I don't have a copy of the lease with me. But I'm telling you factually...
You're alleging that there is a lease on the north part, on the north parcel.
There was.
From Crow to Seidenfeld.
Seidenfeld occupied a building on the north side until its new building was completed about a year ago, or whenever it was completed. But continued to occupy the south part of the north parcel until the new building was built.
And do you have any letter from the landlord, or any, you know, evidence of payment of rent, or anything?
No, I don't have it with me. But I'm telling you factually, and you can tell by the address, that Seidenfeld still maintained that address of 826. And that's in the documents you'll see here. The property address for the new site, I believe, is 9917 or 918. But the north piece is 826. Moving on to some of the other exhibits, which, which you've been told tell you that there's been an abandonment of use, which we strenuously object to. I guess I'd like to point out number seven, exhibit number seven. Seidenfeld was not a party to that exhibit, so I don't know why it's there. It was a contract between two other parties, a party that Seidenfeld sold to, and then a third party. The quitclaim deed is between the city of Des Moines and Seidenfeld. Seidenfeld bought the south piece and another five or six acres years ago from the city of Des Moines. And the city of Des Moines continued to use part of the property that it sold to Seidenfeld. A dispute erupted, and the parties settled that in the deed, this deed, number eight, is part of that settlement. Number nine, you've been told depicts the property in the year 2000. You see number 10, which is a salvage, salvage dealer license. Currently, Seidenfeld doesn't hold one, and hasn't for years, because there's been some question whether it even needs one. It does not sell salvage to the general public. You see number 13, which you've been told depicts the use of the north and the south piece. 14 is the license again. 15 is a...